I call to order the January 6th special meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Councilmember Kristoff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose stand is unwavering, indivisible.
The council did not meet in closed session, so we're going to proceed directly to our general administration agenda. Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, and as is noted on our agenda, items that are brought up under item 1A can't be -- or precluded by state law from taking those issues up, but it does provide an opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any item on our agenda this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can involve some amount of anxiety, so we ask that there not be any boos, or applause, or cat calls, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, item 1A, we have no written request to speak under that. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Okay, then we'll proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Yesterday, the Streetcar Policy Committee, Steering Committee, met. This is the first meeting of the new streetcar group, which is, I don't remember the exact composition, but it's a couple of members of each of the two city councils, one from each of the two transportation districts, and representatives of the business, property owner, and civic community that aren't elected officials. And so we, this was the first time that that group has gotten together. It's been the first time we've had a policy committee meeting in about six months. And Mr. Friedman, who's in the audience, was, is a member of that committee, one of our representatives as well. Mr. Villegas and I were both present. It was a productive meeting, and we were at, obviously, at a critical point, but one of the, one of the things that's emerged from the last time, I think, we've had a full council briefing on the streetcar project, is that the federal government has a new program for, a new grant program for urban circulators, and it's designed really just for projects like this. So rail-based, fixed-rail, urban circulating transit systems that is essentially exempt from a large portion of all of the regulatory hurdles and barriers that would have other, that we were otherwise anticipating making this project a five-to-10-year one if we were to pursue federal funds. So the federal government has created a new path, which is faster and streamlined, and put some money behind it. And so I forget what the total amount that's available, but the grants can be up to $25 million for a project. So that's, that's, in a, in a total project budget for the entire streetcar starter line phase one of just under $70 million, a $25 million federal grant would be obviously a big, a big chunk. So we discussed that. The big challenge is that the grant applications do in February. It is January.
Beginning of February.
Yeah, early February. And we don't, we don't have, I think we entered the meeting with a lack of final agreement on what the Sacramento, half of the alignment might be. We ended the meeting with at least an agreement that it wasn't going to be the alignment that we thought it was going to be. So the, the key outcome, I think, on the, the routing issue from Sacramento is that they weren't, they just weren't prepared, understandably, at this stage, to make a determination about what their, their alignment ought to be. And so there's no way we could apply for the full $69 million project. We are looking, the staff is exploring at the direction of the committee a couple of different options. The primary one, which we would like to see work if it's possible from a technical perspective, is that we apply essentially for that $25 million grant, or some amount of that, to fund the construction and the acquisition of the actual streetcar vehicles for the western half of the line. So essentially, is the, the portion that would be in West Sacramento up to and just over the Tower Bridge, you know, perhaps ending somewhere around the Embassy Suites. We could do that. There's not a lot of controversy about our route. We already, we have the environmental work done, which put us in a good competitive position compared to other regions across the country that just heard about this grant program, you know, the last few months, like we did, but haven't had time to do it in EIR because they weren't in process, so we could apply for that money. There are a couple of challenges, one of which is, it's not, the system was not designed for, we didn't design the starter line to end in the middle. And so from an engineering perspective, there's, you know, obviously, there's a question, how do you, how do you turn the car around if you were to stop, say, at Embassy Suites? There's not a lot of room there to make a U-turn or to circle around again. So one, there's an engineering question as to whether or not it's technically possible to accomplish. And then the second operational question is, because the line would not connect to the light rail system the way that our, our, our full starter line is intended to do, we can't get the cars to the, to the, to RT's service yard for their, that they would, that they use for light rail vehicles and that they would use for the streetcar. So there's a couple of these sort of not trivial engineering issues that have to be examined as well. I think the other opportunity that emerged at the meeting was the possibility of tacking on to RT's order for their green line. So the green line is the regional transits, sort of aspirational light rail line that would run from the rail yards up to Township 9, up to Richards Boulevard. Not really a heavy ridership line at this stage, but I think their, you know, their hope is, is that it, like, this line, that it'd anchor and promote and help to shape development. So they're proceeding with that project and want, and would intend to operate it, at least initially, using streetcar equipment as opposed to traditional and more expensive light rail equipment. So, you know, one option that is, that may be a good mid, near-term opportunity is for us to jointly order the cars, that's in, 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 whether it's buses or, or streetcars or light rail cars, the volume, the, the discounts involved in volume purchasing are significant. So those are the, the two kind of opportunities that we're looking at the committee. There was broad support, I think, at the committee for moving this direction with maybe one, one not trivial exception, but the committee asked the staff to come back in a week, so we'll be meeting again next week to, with these options fleshed out and determine whether or not to give the green light, to come to the councils essentially, and file an application for that federal dollars. So. Okay. So with that, there's no further council communications. We're going to defer 1C to our regular, next regular meeting. So that brings us to item 2, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 10-4 approving a development agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors II LLC.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Katie Jacobson with the City Redevelopment Agency. I'm pleased to be able to be before you tonight presenting a proposed development agreement with Smart Growth Investors II LLC. This evening, staff is recommending that the city council approve the addendum to the fulcrum EIR, conduct a public hearing, and waive the first reading of ordinance 10-4 approving the development agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors II LLC based on the required findings being met and the agreement terms being consistent with city objectives. The presentation tonight has been organized into three sections. I'm going to present a brief PowerPoint on the overall strategy and process and transaction structure of the development agreement, then provide a brief summary of the changes that were submitted to you by memo. Those were changes to the agreement that the parties have agreed to that happened since the time the development agreement was submitted to council. And a third element of the presentation will be to outline the two remaining issues that are under discussion with the developer. Since 1993, the city's vision for the Bridge District has been to develop it as a dense urban core due to its proximity to regional job centers, freeway access, waterfront location, and vistas across the river. In 2007, the city established a strategy to create the conditions that would permit near-term urban-scale development in the district served by streetcar. The goal of that strategy was to maximize the generation of tax increment revenue during the life of the redevelopment area. To implement this, the city and property owners began a collaborative effort to update the Bridge District-specific plan, recommend changes to the city's regulatory environment and fees to support the dense urban-scale transit-oriented development product that was envisioned, and to structure the terms of the development agreements. Urban standards to support sustainable development have been established in the recently approved specific plan, and others are being incorporated into citywide ordinances and plans. The task force has continued to advance deindustrialization of the district, and in 2008, the city cleared final hurdles for access to the river and construction of vital infrastructure with the relocation of a rail-served industrial use and the purchase of the remaining Y rail track from Union Pacific. In the spring of last year, the tracks were demolished, and the fulcrum property, or Smart Growth, began demolishing its old warehouses on its site. Based on the task force work products, the city secured a Prop 1C grant in the summer of 2008 for $23.1 million for first phase of backbone infrastructure construction, and the grant includes a commitment to build 731 market-rate and affordable residential units. An urban affordable housing credit program was established in August of 2008, and last month, the council approved a resol, a resolution to form CFD 27, which implements urban fees and commits private funding for the Prop 1C grant scope of work, which we refer to as the 2014 plan. The graphic before you is, indicates the area that, that of the Smart Growth Investors LLC, the area of property that's covered under this agreement, that's in the graphic in the bold black lines. Because the district has multiple owners, the task force defined the overarching terms and conditions and requirements that needed to apply to all the property owners in the district and established them in the specific plan in CFD 27, and is in the process of completing implementing them into citywide ordinance, ordinances, and master plans. Additionally, the city is flowing through some of its obligations under its Prop 1C grant agreements with the state to the property owner through this development agreement, and there was a separate affordable housing agreement with the developer to dedicate property for development of 70 of the committed affordable units. The development agreement, to a great extent, relies on the specific plan policies in detail and assumptions for entitlements, infrastructure capacity, expected build-out, parks, plan, amenities, and design and development standards. The development agreement obligates Smart Growth LLC to participate in the financing district, CFD 27. The CFD establishes the urban fees and provides the repayment to the state if the developer fails to construct the committed residential units. The city is also flowing through to the developer an obligation to build 386 market-rate housing units in this development agreement. This is a portion of the city's obligation to the state under its Prop 1C grant agreements. It also obligates the city to construct the scope of work that the city proposed and is included and incorporated into the city agreements with the state with regard to the Prop 1C funds. This is a massing graphic of the 2014 plan. You can see the afforded, the, on the corner of the off-ramp in Fifth Street is the dedicated property for the affordable units. The other initial phase of units will be constructed around Garden Park. There's additional units along the waterfront, on the urban, on the Unger's parcel, and along Tower Bridge Gateway, there's a parcel the city has set aside for additional affordable and market-rate units. This is the area on the graphic that the developer under the agreement will record covenants on until such time as the Prop 1C housing is constructed. The fulcrum EIR included parcels in the core neighborhood, which are denoted on the graphic in pink. They are not included under this DA. The agreement, however, provides that Smart Growth can transfer its entitlements to those parcels. The city did a supplemental EIR to accompany the specific plan updates, and the recommendations tonight include approval of an addendum that's intended to update some of the fulcrum EIR mitigations based on the more recent analysis that was completed with the specific plan The DA provides the parcels proportionate share of their maximum build-out entitlements for 17 years, and provides Smart Growth the ability to transfer between neighborhoods, including to their parcels in the core neighborhood. The DA includes a 17-year term, except for a vesting of its baseline entitlements for 30 years. It includes fee vesting. There's an agency-to-city commitment to reinvest tax increment in the district. There, the developer is obligated to participate in a CSD for operations and maintenance. The agreement sets forth a priority and importance of financing of streetcar. The, there is also obligations in the agreement for, that have to do with the public-private integration of the plaza, and it, there's obligations and requirements that provide for the developer to construct the restrooms, the public restrooms that will serve the plaza, to dedicate them back to the city, whereupon the city will assume responsibility for operations and maintenance and liability for those restrooms. The agreement provides that the city continue its obligations to finish implementing the urban standards and the various citywide ordinances, zoning, and master plans with regard, in particular, to noise, density, trees, and light. The agreement requires that the developer construct Garden Park. They will, their performance schedule for construction of Garden Park is November 2011. They will be reimbursed $1.15 million from Prop 1C state funds for this whole phase of improvements to Garden Park upon dedication to the city. The agreement provides for promenade dedication, which is indicated in aqua, and easements over the east-west access streets on the subject property. The universal or accessed east-west streets remain private, streets that require a 60-foot no-build zone, and the agreement provides that the developer will record 20-foot public easements down the center of the streets for pedestrian, bike, and emergency vehicle The local road dedications covered in the agreement are in yellow. There's a regional road dedications required. Those are shown on the graphic in purple. The agreement provides for a land exchange to build the sewer lift station that's part of the 2014 plan improvements. The city parcel is to the north, the developers currently own parcel is to the south, and both parties have agreed that the lift station would be best placed on the southern parcel. So the agreement provides the terms and conditions for that swap, and includes the abandonment of a portion of Tower Street. Since the development agreement was transmitted to council, two additional memos have been transmitted. One memo summarizes non-substantive changes to the agreement, which the parties have agreed to. The agreed-to changes were primarily a language refinement for clarity about transfer of entitlements to other parcels in the density bank, a correction to clarify that the Plaza property is not currently publicly owned as of the date of this agreement, however, that it is intended to be acquired by the city. And the last change was the addition of the form of the temporary construction easement as an exhibit. I'd like to pause the presentation at this time to ask if council has any questions about those initial changes.
Mr. Proton Villegas?
Not necessarily about the changes, but the slide that you have up now with the outstanding issues. So it, so the, we've made a lot of progress in the last couple, well, tremendous amount of progress in the last month and a half, I guess, to be where we are now, and we've whittled it down to two remaining issues. So the intent is not necessarily this evening to work on those, is to just sort of recognize them and then continue to work on them before the next hearing. Is that, is that?
Well, in, as part of the presentation tonight, staff will be presenting the, the two positions on those outstanding issues.
Got it.
I don't know if the city attorney wants to comment on the timing.
Thanks. Thank you, Katie. The difficulty here is that this is the first reading of the ordinance approving the development agreement. Between first and second reading, we can't make material changes to the terms of the DA. So we really are looking for some direction tonight from council on one of the two positions or some compromised position. If we can get that kind of direction, we can incorporate it into the version that comes back on the third for adoption.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Mr. Johansson?
All right. So are you going to be continuing with the?
Yes, I can go into that if there's no questions on the other memo. An additional memo was transmitted from the city attorney today summarizing two additional issues that are still under discussion. Under the agreement before you, the developer vests in its baseline entitlements for a period of 30 years. However, after 17 years, approximately 20% of the, the total entitlements or the maximum entitlements, if not used, would transfer back into the density bank, which the city could then reallocate entitlements back to them or any other property owner in the district that was proposing a dense project. The baseline entitlements are what the property owners define as their expected or anticipated build-out scenario, whereas the maximum or total entitlements of $12.5 million was approximately what was studied in the '93 specific plan EIR, and the infrastructure and amenities have been scoped to serve this $12.5 million build-out scenario wherever possible. The developer is requesting to be vested for 30 years in its share of the total or maximum entitlements, which would prohibit the city from reallocating any unused capacity associated with those parcels for 30 years. The city's strategy has been to establish the conditions and incentives to encourage dense urban development in order to maximize the amount of tax increment that can be captured for improvements over the life of the redevelopment district and to jumpstart the city's vision. Given the extent of public investment in the infrastructure, the ability to reallocate excess capacity after 70 years so that it is not stranded on the property is consistent with the city's strategy and policy goals. Vesting in its share of maximum build-out for 30 years would not be conditioned on any requirement to develop beyond the first phase of Prop 1C housing, and is therefore not consistent with the policy goal of incentivizing earlier development. The second issue is with regard to the net tax increment. The net tax increment definition includes a carve-out for funding of agency operations and maintenance costs in addition to the statutory pass-throughs, housing set aside, and existing debt service for baseball. For ease of administration, this carve-out for agency costs is stated in the agreement to be the ratio of district to total tax increment, and has been estimated at approximately 14.5%. The developer has indicated that this amount is too high and requested that it be based on a direct billable of fully-loaded staff time tracked to the project, but not to exceed this 14.5%. Staff is recommending the straight percentage for ease of administration, and as over the life of the project, there will be significant variations in agency and consultant costs. In the early years, there will be insufficient increment generated to cover agency resources dedicated to the Bridge District, but this will be made up in later years. The agency currently does not create fully-loaded billable rates, including indirect costs, and it would require significant resources to create the rates and allocate its costs in this manner. There would more than likely be a deficit built up in the early years that would have to be tracked as well. Moreover, the council will always have the freedom to redirect some of this 14.5% carve-out from the agency back into district projects. And that concludes staff presentation.
All right. Questions from council? Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Katie, let me understand this. 20% tax increment, 20% set-asides guarantee because of the housing component. 11% goes to county. And I always thought ours was about 11%. Where am I missing it, Wes? I mean, Les?
No, the, the 11% is the pass-through to the county. The city now receives a pass-through pursuant to our amendment of the redevelopment plan in 2006, but it's a relatively small amount relative to the pass-through to the county. We've got some other administrative charges that, that bring us to a little over, or a little under 40%, kind of taken off the top between pass-throughs, administrative charges, and housing set aside. The, the development agreement wording allows for the city to take a share of operating costs out of the gross tax increments generated in the Bridge District. And we estimated that citywide, our, our direct operating costs are about 14% of gross tax increments. And so the plan was to apply that to gross tax increments from the Bridge District.
Okay, so it's, it's not on top of some other portion of increment that is subtracted and given back to the city?
It is on top of the statutory pass-through.
So the statutory pass-through you're talking about is what percentage? Are you talking about the school, I mean, you're talking about the, the housing set aside and the county pass-through? And then the 14% is on top of that, or is there another layer in there that I've missed that we're also adding?
There, there is a pass-through to the general fund that is a result of the extension of the district, so we do get a pass-through as a general fund. Yeah, just roughly, it, it looks like it's about 40% of the pass-through to the county, the county pass-through being 11%. So the pass-through to the city is 40% of that amount.
And that's not part of this agreement. That, we did that when we, when we extended the redevelopment area.
We have to pay that.
We, right.
We have no. We have no.
That's not, that's not new under the DA.
No, absolutely.
But I think the initial question was, so what is our historic allocation of redevelopment agency revenues for redevelopment agency operations? Is 14% been a historic figure or is that just, you just calculated that on a current budget basis or?
It's a historic figure. We actually tightened it up from, kind of took out the extraneous stuff. So it was a very defensible, clean number associated with our operating costs, which are primarily staff, professional services, office supplies, you know, everything that every business pays.
So, and that's to support the redevelopment agency economic development unit, the whole operation?
Yes.
Okay, so if we, if we took the approach that the developer is suggesting on a, as a matter of policy, for example, on all of our projects, if we were to start to implement essentially billables, would that mean we would have no way of financing our business retention and recruitment program or the other activities of the redevelopment agency that are not specifically related to a particular tax increment generating project?
Well, we've.
Without divvying into the general fund?
If each project, if each area of the city took its own share of operating costs, we'd be fine. And that's what we're proposing here, is that operating costs be allocated to, be proportional to total tax increments generated. So that, you know, if, if we were to do another initiative like this and carve out another area of the city and say, you're on your own, your tax increments stay in there, we'd want to do the same thing. And if everyone did that, then we'd have essentially the same operating budget that we have today.
So how would you pay for business recruitment or retention?
Business recruitment and retention, a portion of that is in this 14%. So we're saying.
Right, but not if, but if you would go to a, we're only going to go on an area-by-area basis, right? When we do, I mean, so you would have business recruitment or retention charging as, charging on an area-by-area basis in a, for example, when we recruited IKEA, for example, I mean, that's a non-trivial amount of staff effort that was required. There was no, I mean, there's no specific allocation that's for, that's not specifically tied to a land development project that was sufficient to support that. The notion that redevelopment, that the redevelopment agency's activities are tightly coupled just with these sorts of land development projects is the area I'm struggling with because I don't know how we would finance these other economic, more, citywide economic development activities that obviously have benefits for each of the areas, but, you know, either they're not assignable or we don't know what they are, you know, a priori in order to do that. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. If we were, for example, to exclude economic development expenses from this 14%, who would you, and we wanted to do an economic development project in the bridge district, we wouldn't have the funding to do it essentially.
But it is included. Within the 14 and a half percent is money for economic development.
Right, but, yeah, but, so, but we do economic development on a, we're trying to recruit employers, sales tax generators and others to the city or to the redevelopment area as a whole. And they don't, it's not necessarily correlated with the, with the tax recruitment that's generated in that area. And so, to the extent you say, we're going to support economic development, business recruitment and retention primarily out of the tax increment that's generated on the east, on the west side of the city, that may or may not pencil. It has benefits, you know, if the economy of the city collapses or we don't have jobs throughout the rest of the city to support the residents of the bridge district, it has consequences for the bridge district. It's not as, it's not easily, I'm not saying it can't be done, obviously, with the right, with the right wits people and complicated unfathomable formulas and algorithms, it could be, I guess it could be. But it's no simple matter to be able to determine for the citywide, for the citywide economic development strategy and program, how to assign that on a, on a project basis.
And it's not being assigned specifically, it's really being allocated on an average basis.
Under what you're proposing?
Yes, right.
All right, I'm asking if we were to, if, the reason I'm only raising this is if we took this billable approach instead.
Oh, if you went to the billable, then, then you're right. There is no billable that you could readily assign to the bridge district unless we actually did a project in the bridge district of recruitment. And that, then the overall operation wouldn't be adequately funded. But this only represents a portion of the total, so we'd have to fund it out of other areas disproportionately.
Right, because our activity to retain, for example, a major employer or major sales tax generator elsewhere in the city does not improve our tax increment at all. It's not generating any additional increment if we prevent an employer from closing up shop or a sales tax generator from closing up shop. So there's nobody generating any new increment, right? So the idea that you would, okay, well, you just assign it to those properties doesn't work, right? There has to be, I mean, it is one of those sort of, you know, moral obligations, economic obligations of all the players in the local economy to support that activity, which would not, doesn't seem like it's easily achievable under a billable approach, but no. Mr. Johansson?
Yes, what, do we have an estimate what the total increment will be? An estimate for this, for the 17 years?
Approximately, depending on obviously how things develop and how fast things develop, so it's highly speculative. I think the CFD assumes over 6 million build-out, around 70 million. The expected build-out of 9.6 million, I've roughly given, if you think that there's 3.9 million of commercial development and structured parking, there's roughly a commitment currently in our financing plan of around 90 million, 90 to 95 million of tax increment.
So 90 to 95 million. So 14% of that is really what we're looking at over 17 years?
No.
Well, that estimate.
What I'm trying to do is come up with, you know, based on your projections, we take the 14%, what does that mean over 17 years? Divide that by 17, is that really a realistic estimate of what the operating costs are going to be or the burden on redevelopment plus, you know, all the additional pieces are going to be? Because one of the things you could also look at is not necessarily billing, but you could cost out, and I think you could be just as transparent by allocating direct costs and then indirect costs could be, for example, economic development and those types of things. But approach it from a costing perspective versus approaching it from just a straight 14% perspective. I mean, either way, I think it's transparent, but part of the problem is cash flow here. And I know that you've mentioned that, yeah, we can always reallocate this back, but the problem is someone would have had to pay that or wouldn't have gone into a repayment pot until that time. And, you know, I think we've talked about this in terms of other fees too, is, you know, really what does it cost to do these? And, you know, of course, do these particular services, and of course, we can look at things above and beyond this project that the redevelopment agency does that are good for the whole agency, but, you know, it just seems that without looking at actually what goes into this, whatever percentages, it's a little arbitrary. I know you've said it's based on a track history, but, you know, and so that's kind of what I'm looking at is the amount of money that could possibly be collected over the period of 17 years. Is that realistically, does it have a relationship to really what it takes in the agency to do it?
You know, we took an approach that's easy to track. It's easy to do, doesn't require setting up new tracking systems, no additional paperwork. It may not perfectly replicate our costs in the bridge district in any one year, but the feeling was that over a 17-year period, there'll be years we're spending more, years we're spending less effort in the bridge district, it'll all even out. So it was really ease of administration that we proposed this methodology.
Yeah, but, you know, the redevelopment agency isn't in the business to make a profit. And it could even out, the redevelopment agency could actually collect more than it really should. There's really no way to, to know that until the 17 years has lapsed into the redevelopment agency occurs, we know what's been collected over the time and what the costs have been. That's really the only time you can reconcile this. Whereas if you look at it more on a cost basis, you know, I don't know how, I know it would probably be complicated to institute a new system, but I know we've talked about this in terms of other services, fees and services that the city does, and it could be an idea to start taking a look at this if we're looking at more as a cost basis of providing services rather than just a percentage. I think we had this conversation before with basing city fees on percentages that other cities use, which, you know, doesn't really have any relation to what it actually costs us, because we may be able to be more efficient in how we're providing the services and actually be able to reduce our fees because it costs us less to do that.
I actually have the opposite concern, which is it's true, somebody's fronting money, but it's us, or so the, I mean, the folks taking the risks are the city. Because we don't have any assurance that the build-out scenario that is contained in all of our forecasts is going to happen, and we don't have any control over that. Once we issue the entitlements, the vast preponderance of the control over whether these outcomes occur beyond the actual market is in the hands of the property owners and the developers, not us. And so we will be required to do the spending that we're already doing, things like tonight for, you know, in the near term. Most of our, we'll have higher costs in the earlier years than we will in the later years. But this, the reimbursement of that ultimately to the, to the city, because the redevelopment agency, because these aren't fees, these, you know, under state law, this is our money. It is not, we're not taking this money away from developers. It is assigned under law to economic development of our community. But we'll do all this, we'll do a lot, the preponderance of the spending on the expectation that this build-out will occur. I assume, I'm hoping that you're, that we have some discount rate factor that's been put into your calculation so that we, as you're assessing how this is going to affect us over time, because a dollar, you know, 17 years from now is worth substantially less than the dollar that we're spending today. But the significant exposure on the risk side is to us, not on the developer's side. So have you, I mean, is, have you, in constructing this approach, I mean, the billable thing doesn't solve that either, but in constructing this approach, have you, you know, made sure that that's, that we're protecting the city's risks and interests sufficiently over time?
Without knowing what the build-out is, it's hard to do that calculation, but we certainly recognize the phenomenon that in the early years, we'll be continuing to spend money in the bridge district and there will be little or no tax increment. And, you know, frankly, we were expecting to, for the agency to be reimbursed on the back end when development gets some traction.
And to accommodate the time value of money so that there would be some.
So that is incorporated, okay.
Some interest rate associated with that.
Okay.
If I might, there's, I don't, I don't know that we have a philosophical issue here at all from the staff standpoint. We've suggested an alternative that is relatively straightforward and relatively simple to calculate and is reflective, I think, of not what our recent expenditures have been, which is higher, probably closer to 20%, but reflective more of traditional average for what, what we think that the operation would be. But a fully loaded billing strategy is also doable, and we can do that. And if that's the preference of the landowners and the council, we can do that. By fully loaded though, we would then take things like economic development and put that on to the billing rate so that there, there would be funded in that respect as well. So we can construct that, that's not at all undoable. It will be more than the simple salary and the benefits of the employees. It will be salary benefit and the other operations of the, of the department to be able to achieve that. But we can do it. It's not, it's not difficult.
Would that also, because part of the problem with just doing it that way would be some limitations, some cap.
Well, I think that, I think the notion that it only can be 14 and a half percent is inconsistent with the concept of going to billable rates. If you go to billable rates, you go to billable rates.
Right.
And you can't cap it or otherwise the city is just eating it unless that's the direction the council goes.
Right, right.
Right. And if we had done something like that, we'd never would have been able to do Rayleigh Field. I mean, projects come up. I mean, I know we are, this is an extraordinarily bright city council and management team, but we do not have perfect foresight for the next 17 or 30 years. And to completely, totally constrain future councils to be unable to have the resources to take advantage of opportunities or to respond to crises, I don't think is responsible. I mean, so, I mean, I don't love the billable approach, but I, if you can do it, I don't have a, I don't have a philosophical objection to it. It just does have to be, it does have to be fully loaded. I suspect it actually will cost more.
That would be my concern. My concern is, is it's going to cost more than the 14%. So, I mean, I think that staff has probably come up with a pretty decent compromise here. And, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I just, my instincts say that the 14% figure is, it's easily, it's easily computed and at the same time, I think that this is the 14%, quite frankly, is a little bit better deal for the developer than, than the other. That's my, my basic instinct, but I, of course, I don't know because I don't know what build-out will be. I don't know the number of units or anything else.
Can I just ask a basic question that would help me better understand kind of where this is going? If the actual costs are less than the 14%, wouldn't we then have the flexibility to then reinvest that TI back into essentially the same district or, I mean.
Absolutely.
So this, so what staff's proposing doesn't bind us from, from that.
Right.
Should we decide two, three years from now, where, and, which nobody knows, you know, where the economy will be or how much build-out will be proposed at that point, let alone 15, 17 years from now? So I mean, we have that flexibility if the, if the philosophical starting point collectively is that the funds should be used to be reinvested back into the district.
Exactly. The council would have that option.
That's helpful. Mr. Johansson?
I think that when you're looking at a reimbursement, at that point, you're still going to have to recalculate the cost, right? So you're at the same point, only at a future date than where you are right now.
Well, each year, we attract costs. Those costs will change over time. As compensation changes. And then, at the end of the day, my guess, and I think Bill is right, in the near term, we're likely to spend more than 14%.
Yeah.
Because in the near term, we're developing infrastructure. As we get out at the end, we're likely to spend less than 14%. But we will probably have a deficit somewhere in the middle where we're trying to have to pay back that early advancement of funds. So I think it's a calculated guess on the part of the developers, whether it's cheaper to go with 14% or it's cheaper to do a calculation. But in the near term, I would guess it's going to be more expensive for them to do a calculation.
But over the project?
Over the project length, it might be a wash or it might be slightly to their benefit to do it that way.
But no, no time soon. I mean, we're not, we're not going to be generating a heck of a lot of increment, net increment in this area for a while, and we will have significant costs as a result of all this work in 1C and everything else. I mean, I mean, you know, I just, I don't think it's a two or three or five-year issue that we're going to be looking at that, at that inflection point.
Right.
It's a way, it's a long ways out.
And how, how would this be effect, I mean, the one thing that we don't control, or another thing we don't control is the state's take of the TI. And so, something that we're fighting with at the very moment. So to what extent, you know, you don't have a crystal ball, but to what extent can we commit when we really don't even control ultimately, potentially, depending on what the courts rule, whether or not we get to have all the TI that we think we have at the moment?
Yeah, those are certainly the uncertainties that we, we face. And I think that the, philosophically, the question is, are we comfortable with an averaging that's going to be reasonably close, but in any particular year can be dramatically off? Or are we going to rely on a specific calculation? And as I said, from staff's standpoint, we can do either. We think the former is easier, but it's not necessarily more advantageous to the city.
Right. Right, well, I mean, to Mayor Procham's point, I mean, the, this figure, the 14% is off of net.
Right.
Tax increment. And so if the state were to take, you know, another half of the money, then the fourth, then that's basically half of the 14%. And so, you know, that's the disadvantage to the city of using a straight percentage as opposed to a direct billables, where it would be just what we actually spent as opposed to having to be further. opposed to having to be further at the whim of the legislature. Okay, about the discussion on the second, we also do have two requests to speak on this item, which you can take at whatever time, but, or three. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you. Then on the second issue, on the vesting issue, what, there's a distinction being made for the, these 500, or 500,000 flex square feet, I guess it would be, and the balance. And it's basically either expiration in 17 years or by 20, 30, 30 years, the difference between the two. Now, why again are these being treated differently?
Well, if you recall in the specific plan, that one of the task force recommendations that was developed and implemented in the specific plan was the, an urban incentive for denser development, where the developers define what, this is the expected build-out, this is our projected build-out, and then they said this would be the maximum build-out. And so, all the infrastructure was sized and scoped wherever possible to serve the maximum build-out. But given the extent of public investment in that infrastructure and the policy goal of encouraging and supporting and jump-starting this very dense urban-scaled vision for the district, the city, in the specific plan, it implements a density bank whereby the city council or cities, or its delegated appointee can reallocate development capacity. So, it's 20 percent, that additional 20 percent between the expected and the maximum is what is managed by the city and this bank in order to incentivize very dense projects that may need additional capacity to be realized.
No, basically, the way the entitlements worked in for the first 17 years, there's really no, I mean, this is a legislative development agreement, as I understand it.
Right.
After 17 years, you know, maybe some other city council or the voters or whoever, is there a risk that that could be, the land use could be changed for those flex units or flex square footage?
So, you're, you're asking that, under the scenario that there's a voter initiative that limits growth, and the city has now banked those entitlements, would the city be able to reallocate them? I'm going to turn to the city attorney on that.
I, I think what you're asking is, at the end of the 17-year term, what happens?
The risk, there's, there's risk after, after that.
Exactly. The, the point of a development agreement is to provide that level of certainty to the developer that the rules of the game won't change during the term of the DA. And specifically, we're talking about land use designations, you know, the council won't decide five years from now that we'd rather have this all be park, and so, we change the entire Bridge District to parkland. That's what you get with a development agreement. So, the risk to the developer in this scenario is that's at 17 years, to the extent development has not occurred, if the council were to decide at that point to dramatically reduce the density of what's left of the Bridge District, that could happen.
See, I think there's-
And not be a regulatory taking? I mean, we can just take, we can just rezone people's-
No, you couldn't take it, but you could, you could, you could downzone in essence.
Right, but radically strip, you know, the ability of the property owner to develop the number of units, I mean-
As a practical matter, that probably wouldn't happen. Legally, you would be able to at that point.
But wouldn't that just be, they're vested for their baseline for the 30 years?
Right.
So, we're only talking about that 20 percent increment, so they have their 9.6 million build-out, their expected build-out for the term of 30 years vested.
It's the difference between the baseline, which is 80 percent of their maximum, and maximum plus the 500,000 in flex space. That's the, that's the piece we're talking about. We've already agreed as part of the DA that their baseline is vested for 30 years.
Right.
So, they will be able to build up to their share of the 9.6 million over that 30-year period. Right, there is, do you want to-
Just an additional component, that's probably a subtlety, but it may have bearing. We could also vest the bank process for the 30 years. So, in that case, it probably would be exempt from the manipulations of either an initiative or the council, but it would exist as a concept, and it wouldn't necessarily, the benefits wouldn't necessarily accrue to this particular property owner, but it would accrue to the district, and this property owner would be eligible for the benefits.
We would be, we would be adding language in that would vest the developer for the 30-year term in baseline entitlement and in the density bank process as outlined in the specific plan.
Yeah, I think something like that would recognize kind of, I mean, both sides here risking a lot doing this. There's a lot of unforeseen financial consequences, and to, to have a mechanism that recognizes that the investments that are being put in by both sides go well beyond 17 years. These are, this is a long, long-term project, and the benefits of this may not occur until year 18, 20, 25, or whatever. And a lot of that investment's going to be upfront, and it, to me, it just doesn't seem fair that, you know, after 17 years, there's a potential 20 percent loss of what you've done to that point, and that's it. I mean, that's a huge hit, and this is a huge project. So, to the extent we can find some way to maybe lessen that risk, I would certainly be in favor of that.
Other questions or comments at this point? All right, then we have three requests to speak on item two. First is by, and we're not taking any more cards, but we, the speaker requests are due at the conclusion of the staff report and prior to the beginning of council questions and public comments. So, Mr. Lowell is first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. Once again, we have, shall we say, brevity and vagueness in the agenda item, lacking specifics, and to me, that sounds like it relates to, or comparable to the Brown Act type thing. It seems like we ought to have a separate agenda for the computer literate folks and another agenda for those of us that don't know everything about computers so we can understand what, what's being discussed. But I was thinking, if developer thinks 14.2 percent is too high, I was just wondering how high is or are their corporate CEO pay? And if we lower the 14.2 percent rate, then we should require that CEO pay to be lowered to compensate such a long-term commitment by city requires same, should be, should be required same by the developer? And I was wondering if there's any bankruptcy protection for the city under something like this? And I'm also wondering, in my mind, what specific changes, like, are we going to modify the Pioneer Bridge to accommodate the extra traffic generated by this new development? And other than that, I'm just, I just, again, I wish there was more specifics provided in the agenda that's provided to the public tonight, because I think you have two different audiences, and one of these days, I'll catch up, hopefully, but there's bound to be thousands of others like me out there that don't understand this code language you're talking in that eliminates the details. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Lowell. Michael Laktav?
Thank you, and first of all, just, I want to wish you all a happy new year. This is the first time this year, and not only a happy new year, but a year that's really fruitful, and hopefully for, for all of us. And thank you for thinking some time back of creating, actually, helping to create the Brighton-Brighton Community Action Network. We've been working with staff, and, and as far as this particular item you're discussing, now, I, I do have a suggestion that maybe we adopt a slogan, "Hire West Sac." And hire West Sac so that West Sacramento contractors, West Sacramento construction people would get benefit out of this as it goes along. The other thing in, in general, I know that at least a couple of you are real familiar with the concept of servant leadership and have gone through some training. I've been told a few months ago, as I broached the subject to a person under, under the dome at Sacramento, he says, "Well, you know, Mike, it's a strange thing, what happens." We know that government is of the people, by the people, for the people, but in practical terms, when, when you get elected and when you actually serve the people, it tends to turn out of the dome, by the dome, and for the dome. And I know that this is, this is not the way that this council works. We appreciate it and look forward to maybe giving you a report, progress report, on some of the meetings we've had with staff and ideas and the strategy sessions that's coming up, as well as some training for our committee members. Hopefully, as you strategize and figure out how to implement this great project that you're discussing and other projects that come along, that you will involve us as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Laktav. Ben Davis, Jr.?
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, for the opportunity to speak. I arrived late, I didn't know of the change in time, and I didn't know I got my card in on time to speak, so I appreciate the fact that I'm able to add these comments. Like the first speaker, I'm not familiar with the project and only have to go by what was provided here today, and some of it's a little confusing to me, although it might be that I've been able to discern exactly what it means, and, but I would like to check, and that's why I'm asking these questions. It's, or I should say, first, the reason I'm interested is this is the second time that I've come to a city council meeting for other things and found a project that was also on the agenda, which increased the density of a project. I don't know how much of that is going on, but too much of it going on would be a concern to me, because the growth induction into West Sacramento is questionable in my mind. I love West Sacramento, but I love the way it is, and I actually love the way it was before even more in some ways. So, growth is a concern to me, and this mentions that as a part of this, at some point, either, I don't think it's tonight, there were proposed changes to the regulations, standards, fees, investments, that support a higher density for the development model that you're considering. I'm assuming that's already been voted on and approved from this, although it's a little difficult for me to tell. If I'm wrong in that assumption, I'd like to know. If I'm right in that assumption, it makes me wonder whether or not there was some kind of environmental document prepared, either E I, I assume not an E I R, but perhaps a negative declaration or mitigated negative deck, that would have analyzed the growth inducing impacts of the project. And if there was one, I'd like to know of that, even if it's already been voted on. Other than that, if you could say anything to me or anybody else that gives me an idea of where in this approval process this project is, I'd like to know more about it. It could be I'd support it completely, I don't know enough about it to know at this point. But as I said, I'm concerned about growth induction generally, and so, to see those, the higher density on it, makes me curious about this particular project. Could anybody clear up? Did I ask two coherent questions there, and could I get any answers to that now, or should I wait for that off the record?
The staff will provide answers to some of the questions raised in the public comments at the end of all the comments.
Great, thanks. And then, in the 40 seconds, I just wanted to ask, so I don't waste my time unnecessarily, will you revisit 1A tonight? I'm too late for that.
No, but we'll be back in, are we back next week?
Next week.
Yeah, we'll be back next week.
Next week.
Yeah.
I'll be able to-
Completed Monday.
Regular time.
Regular time next week, exactly.
I'm glad I was able to participate this much. Thank you again.
All right, and Mark Friedman?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Mark Friedman. I'd like to take a couple of minutes and address the, the open issues that, that staff presented. But before I do, I think it's worth reflecting on the presentation that Katie Jacobson made, because I think he did a very, very good job of, you know, talking about the fact that there are mutual risks and mutual promises that are being made in this development agreement. In connection with entering into this agreement with you, the property owners are going to be forming a $70 million community facilities district to help pay for the infrastructure and the amenities that the community wants. We'll be dedicating significant portions of our property, approximately 40 percent of the gross acreage, to public right-of-way, including a permanent waterfront park across the river's edge. And we'll be taking very, very significant risks in building the housing that's necessary to support the $23 million grant that's from the state. So, both of us, you know, are coming to the day, coming to the table, taking risks and investing money in the hope of future development that will benefit both of us. And I think that, you know, the important point about that is that in all of our conversations with staff, the essential bargain was that the developer was going to come to the table with a package of promises, opportunities, and responsibilities, and the city was going to come to the table with, you know, a, a comparable package. And the basic trade was that we would provide the public right-of-way, we would take the risk on the housing, we would form the CFD, and that the city would take the net tax increment that was generated by this project and reinvest it in the district. And it's important, I think, to remember where that net tax increment goes. It goes to build the amenities that the public wants, it goes to build the waterfront park, it goes to build the community parks, it helps to facilitate, you know, the transit-oriented development that we want to have here. The inclusion of a 14 percent operating cost surcharge is a new item that was never discussed in any of the 18 months in which we've been negotiating with the city. It was raised for the first time 10 days ago. It is an item that is not reflected anywhere in the finance plan that was presented and adopted by you a couple of weeks ago. The monies that are being asked to be set aside for operations and maintenance are already committed to building the amenities in the district. So, if we now decide to take that money and reimburse the redevelopment agency for a, for an unspecified set of future services, it means that we won't be able to build the waterfront park on the time that we talked about, we won't be able to fund a streetcar in the timeframe that we talked about. Every one of the amenities that's in the district will be delayed because the money that was modeled in the program will not be there. I'm sorry, am I subject to the three-minute limit, or as the project proponent, do I?
We'll give you five for the, the, the projects, because I know we have the second issue to deal with, too.
You know, if we're going to go down the path of charging these fees, which were not modeled, I think that we're going to have to take a step back and, and, and look at, you know, the entire financial analysis upon which this project is based. Because to the extent that those amenities that were supposed to be funded with city dollars are going to be delayed, it'll affect the financial viability of this project and therefore, our willingness to move forward with it. Finally, I don't really understand the justification, I mean, I understand the administrative simplicity of simply charging 14 percent of gross revenue, it's an easy math calculation, but I don't understand the justification for charging us an amount that is unrelated to the services provided. And as a point of clarification, our proposal that the amount be capped at the actual fully-loaded cost meant fully-loaded cost, including salary and benefits- cost meant fully-loaded costs, including salary and benefits. It didn't mean the entire agency exercise, including activities that the redevelopment agency was engaging in, that didn't have a nexus or a direct benefit to the project. I'll allow, let me just take a minute and talk about the second item because I've got 36 seconds. One of the fundamental things that a development agreement provides is an assurance that after all of the upfront commitments and investment that we've made in this project over the last several years and that we intend to make going forward, is that we actually have the right to develop. Staff is comfortable allowing us to move forward with 80% of those entitlements, but for some logic that I don't understand, has decided that as we get to the later stages of the project, if we haven't completely built out the project, they want to strip away the excess entitlements and require us to go back and seek further permission. That is not acceptable to us, and I frankly see no logic for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Jacobson?
You asked me to respond to?
To all of the public questions that were raised?
Okay. In terms of the gentleman's questions about the agenda item and the, the status of the, the other actions, city actions, for the most part, those have been embedded in the specific plan which was approved by council last month. The other urban standards are being implemented fully into the city's ordinances and plans as we move forward, but they are, as a policy matter, called out within the specific plan. Additionally, fulcrum certified its EIR and the property that's covered in this agreement in February of last year, and the EIR for the specific plan amendments and updates was certified in October of this year. I think that addresses the, the status of the urban standards questions that were raised. Also, the development density for this bridge district area was actually implemented within 1993 specific plan for the area, and since that time, for the past 15 years or more, this area has been envisioned as a dense urban core for the city. And the city's master plans, its fee structures, its environmental analysis has always assumed those densities.
Yes, with regard to the statement that the deduction from gross tax increments of operating and maintenance costs of the agency is new, it's actually been in the document in the development agreement for, for several months. The developer asked for a calculation of that, and that was provided very recently. My understanding is that the developer engaged EPS to do some modeling, and they were not aware that the development agreement called for this deduction. It, I, I believe that we did use some of that modeling, and so I, I think we, we have to say that this, it would be a reduction in the amount of tax increment dedicated to the infrastructure in the bridge district.
Yeah, I mean, this is part I don't understand. I mean, the, I mean, I understand that commitments that we both made at a conceptual level, which we've all, which we've all stuck to through some difficult points, but there was, I never made a commitment that we would cut activities that we're already doing as a city in order to support additional tax increment in the district, which is essentially, if you just wiped out the 14% altogether and said, we're not going to, you know, you never mentioned that, that, that amount and so forth, we're not going to do it, that's essentially saying this entire area's commit, contribution to the regular activities the redevelopment agency has always done is no longer going to occur. So our option is to backfill it from the general fund, issue layup notices or what have you, from activities that we're already doing. It's not some new activity that would be supported by new development inside the district. On the other hand, if you do the billable approach with a cap and what have you, that does consume something. It may not, whether it's 14%, we take the argument that it's less than that. Say it's, it tends to, that number ends up being 9%. That's 9% that's not available for the infrastructure improvements, and so the whole financial model ought to fall apart in the same way that falls apart with the 14%. I, I just, I don't get the, the, the logic of the counterproposal, which is, is some amount of money that is, that would eat away at the waterfront park or the streetcar, the other amenities, just at a different amount. We don't know what that amount is because we haven't constructed any billables, but I think our expectation is it might be higher than that, at least in the initial years. So I just, it doesn't make sense to me that, that, that adopting the alternative proposal would materially affect the overall financial viability of the project. But, so I, I don't get that part of it, frankly. I mean, I understand the argument, but I just, I'm not, I'm not prepared to say we're no longer going to do these activities in terms of business recruitment and retention and economic development and, and the other work that we do, that we have always done that is effective. We're already saying we're going to do less of it, and, and the alternative model was fine, but I, there's no, there's no evidence that that's going to produce a substantially different outcome in terms of the dollars available for infrastructure in the project. So that, I'm, I'm struggling with how to, how to respond to that, other than what you've already, that are, what you've already proposed, which is imperfect, but it is the best available solution at the moment. And as others have said, it preserves our ability in future years to make course corrections as necessary, but that is going to, that future years is a long time from now. Now, on the entitlement issue, I get it, right? So the, I mean, we're, we're asking folks to make commitments to long-term projects, and we say, you know, if you build, say, say, as of 2017, you've built 78% of your project, right? So you've, you've been a good, you've been a good player, you've done exactly what we all anticipated as part of this process, and, you know, the economy turned around sometimes between now and 2017. You built, you went as fast as you could, and you built a bunch of units, and you've got to 78% of your entitlements. You haven't, so you, you haven't, you haven't tapped your tire baseline, and you haven't even started to dip into, into the supplemental amount. And so, but then in 2017, we have the power, our successors have the power then to say that we're going to take that away, and because of that, it's hard for you to finance the initial project that's based on that overall ultimate build-out. So I get, that makes sense to me, that that's a problem. And by the same token, I mean, the alternative scenario, which is that you don't build anything, right? The, you know, the economy does turn to some extent, and you build, you choose to build nothing, and as of 2018, we have had to issue bonds and, or you built the Prop 1C project, but we've had to issue bonds, build infrastructure, commit tax increment, nothing's been built, and so we're not generating any new, any new increment off the project, and we, but we have to keep committing that for an additional 13 years. So those are the, sort of the two, you know, extreme scenarios that we're trying to, you know, both try to deal with, I think. I'm not sure this proposal quite gets to that. I mean, it seems to me like there ought to be some sort of checkpoints along the way, you know? If you're, if you're making some reasonable progress at some point, then, you know, then that, that 2017 date gets pushed out, or you get to, you get a 90% assurance, or some, or there, you know, there's some sort of, you know, good, good faith checking that we're, that we're seeing that, okay, you're actually doing something as, that's, that's consistent with what we're trying to achieve, rather than saying that it's totally contingent on that, on that, what, what the world looks like in 20, 2017, even if you've done everything that you said you would do, and given, or, and given what the conditions in the economy might allow. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the developer proposal of, of just vesting everything for 30 years. But by the same token, I think what we have here also is not, doesn't, doesn't get the job done in terms of providing assurances and the certainty that a developer, that a developer is doing the, doing the job and doing the right thing, given the, given the opportunities and the econ, and the economic context would need in order to be successful at the project. So I don't know if you examined other alternatives?
Well, the city manager, the city manager suggested an alternative whereby we could essentially vest the developer in the bank, and maybe, we haven't thought this through, but maybe a component of that could be a performance incentive, so that as they perform, build out their baseline entitlements, they essentially become more assured of being able to tap the bank for additional entitlements.
Okay. I mean, it gets there. I mean, I'm, I'm interested in, in like a couple of checkpoints that are like big picture as opposed to, you know, every six months you'll submit, have you built, you know, the next 17 and a half units? That, because that, those sorts of things don't allow for your ability to get long-term financing and do the sorts of things you need to, to be able to build a project. So I mean, it's, it's achieving the right balance between, you know, a little bit of nudge to make sure something's happening in, if the, if the, if the economy supports it. And, on the one hand, on the other hand, not laying, layering on so many requirements and things that, that it adds to the uncertainty that makes it impossible to get the financing that you would need. Mr. Johansson?
I think I would concur and move in that direction, a little more assurance with those, those flexions. And on the, on the 14%, you know, another way to look at that is that, sure, we could, we could bank money for economic development activities or whatever, but it really comes down to, you know, what's our priority here? Is our priority to maintain a, an economic development strategy that may or may not maybe may cost a lot? Or is it to move this project forward? I mean, what's better over the next five to 10 years? If we're doing something now to basically bank something for a program that, you know, maybe three or four years ago, it's something we could afford, but, you know, we have to make a choice of whether or not we should be allocating our money toward a broader economic development program, or looking at getting this project going where the money's going to come in to generate increment, generate the amenities people want. So I think that's kind of where I'm coming from on this 14%. It'd be nice for the redevelopment agency to bank, you know, a bunch of money and, and be able to do this, and, and, but they certainly should cover the costs, but, you know, I think we're going to have to be careful about programs that we implement over the next couple of years until the economy. We've had the discussion on budgets, you know, budget here as well, that, you know, it may be, we have to kind of look at what we're trying to do here. We're trying to probably build, get going, building in an area that may be the only viable place, depending if we get remapped or not, for the next five or 10 years. So we have to be very careful, I think, to make sure that we're not overburdening the, this project with something that just will make it uneconomical to proceed.
So if we, how would we have paid to recruit IKEA? And I, had that, I mean, in the near term, IKEA is a much better, much more important economic development tool for the city than this project is, right? In, in, I mean, it just, we would not, we would be in a world of hurt, or a much worse world of hurt if, if we didn't have that project. But it wasn't assignable to any of these. If everybody just said, you know, I want my tax, I want my tax increment, including the increment that you always spent historically on baseline economic development activities that every redevelopment agency does, then how do you do those activities? And I'm not talking, you know, I'm not talking about putting flags up on the street that say, you know, West SAC is a great place to do business. I'm talking, you know, the core stuff that's about job creation and, and sales tax revenues and the sorts of things that are essential to our local workers and to our baseline city revenues for public safety and public services. I just, I don't know how you would do that if you cut those things out and said, no, from now on, we're going, those resources, we're now going to devote entirely to infrastructure in the Bridge District.
No, I think what I'm saying is that we need to be more focused at what we're doing. Five or 10 years ago is a lot different situation when we're recruiting IKEA, we had tax increment, and actually coming in, we had the flexibility. We don't have that flexibility now, and that's a fundamental difference between now and that situation. And we're probably not going to have that flexibility in the next five years. We'll have some money to do things, and we should be doing things, but I think it's going to have to be more targeted, less of a shotgun approach, more target on exactly, you know, what we need to, what we need to bring in here, more focused use of the money.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to, yeah, on, on the long-term certainty for, for the project, I understand their, their concern, and I would agree. I think there needs to be some way in which to reassure particularly the, for the pioneer developers in, in the district, the degree of certainty that they would need to, to, to commit, the level of commitment that we're asking for at the moment. I'm not so sure that I'm interested in seeing milestones that are set necessarily on quantity as much quality. I mean, I, the idea that you would just continue to build and build and build, and that would get you to the milestones, and I know that's not what's being alluded to, is not as appealing as the quality. So I don't know how you strike a balance between what I think we all know we want and what, what gets us there. And so I, I, I don't know if that gives any additional clearance or clarity for, for what you're looking for before you can just have a way this evening to come back with something.
Well, let, let me ask the, the council to ponder an issue for us that I think will help provide some guidance. There is a specific plan provision for this bank. If the council's desire and expectation is that that bank be available only after 30 years, then that is sufficient direction, and we can simply vest everything for 30 years. If there's a concern of some middle ground that, that would give some, that gives the council, give the applicant an access to that increment, increment between the base and the total, based on their performance, and we could, we could come up with a variety of techniques to do that, and it wouldn't necessarily have to be specified here, that, that direction would be helpful. If you're really, and, and neither of those things are accomplished by the language we've presented. If you're comfortable with the language we're presenting, we'd be interested in that, too. But those other two alternatives would tell us where you want to head on this, and I think we can probably come up with language that you could adopt that would provide us guidance, then before you have to finally adopt something, we would be able to share it with everybody, and everybody would, would understand where they were. So I, I don't know if that helps in terms of guidance, but that's what I would offer at this point. I think it's, when you go beyond quantitative measures and start talking quality, that is much more problematic to address, I think.
Yeah. I mean, I like the quanti, I raise the quantitative one only because, not because I'm concerned about performance per se, right? I mean, we have, you know, street-level design guidelines, we have like all those documents that we've already voted on that are intended to assure that we're getting, that what gets built is exactly what we, as a community, want to see get built. I only raise this because the financing plan for all of this, both our contribution, but also this property owner and all the other property owners who are paying into the community facilities district, it all depends on, you know, some, some development occurring, right? And so that's the only, it is, so in some ways, it does turn down to just quantity on this aspect, because we've done so much already in collaboration to deal with the quality aspect. But we need to have enough units in order for everybody to, to make their bond payments and, and, and their loan payments and their bank payments and everything else. And so that's the, to me, that's the, that's the critical point of having some sort of check-in. Because I, the 30-year thing doesn't do it, because we, we could be on the hook for these, we and everyone and all of the private sector partners could be on the hook for all of this investment without having any significant increment coming in to pay for it, if we, if we could just go, everything's 30 years. Mr. Kristof?
Let me change the subject just a tad. On page 19 of the development agreement, 7.3.4. What are we doing here as far as, it says traffic mitigation outside the Bridge District? The parties agree that the landlord is not required to implement traffic mitigation outside the Bridge District.
That's part of the addendum, which tries to reconcile the fulcrum EIR with the more updated analysis that was accomplished within the, the specific plan EIR. So when the fulcrum EIR was being analyzed, they weren't using our updated street grid. There was different assumptions in terms of build-out. And so with the updated analysis from the specific plan EIR, it was, and also because we defined exactly the intersections and then traffic improvements that needed to happen, including those south of Pioneer Bridge, this is just a reconciliation and, and updating of their EIR to align with the final mitigations and the financing plan and the specific plan and the CFD.
Okay. Go down 2 to 7.3.7. Explain that paragraph to me.
I believe that's fairly standard boilerplate in a development agreement, which to the extent that a project is conditioned upon certain infrastructure being upsized or constructed, and the developer does not have control of the property.
Yes, that, that is language that was developed, actually, with the two development agreements in Southport to address. in Southport to address, to clarify something in the...
But if it's not, it's not under anybody's control.
Right. What we, what we're trying to get at is that, is a potential issue under the subdivision map act. If there are off-site improvements that need to be constructed, but the land's not controlled by either the city or the agency, or the landowner, what happens?
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And on the next page, Katie, 9.2.1, credit against inclusionary housing. Are those 85, I mean, 65 units that we have now? Or are those 65 units that they just won't generate?
No, this is related to their dedication of property, to build the bridge housing units, which are, is our qualifying project under Prop 1C.
These, these are units we have now. These are in the city's inclusionary.
They're in the city's bank now, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, okay, okay. Now you can, we can get back to the two other issues that we've got. Okay, from my perspective, I mean, I think that, first of all, this project really sort of sets, in essence, the city of West Sacramento. This is a, this is a major, major project for the city. I think, like, from just a few weeks ago, talking with staff and talking, and, and the development community here, we've really come a long way to narrow it down to these two. And this project is a big deal. It's, it's very important for the city of West Sacramento. For me, on these two leftover issues, I, I know that we're going to have to give staff enough direction so that we can move the project forward, because if not, we have to come all the way back. If we just say, this or the, if we just take a hard line, and it's either this way or that way, then there's going to need to be some additional negotiations between the development community and the city, and then a whole new plan's going to have to come back to us. So we're going to have to make some, in my opinion, we're going to have to make some kind of decisions so that we can give staff at least enough direction. And then the development community can do what they want to do. I mean, it's, you know, but, so, I mean, I think Toby's idea, as far as some kind of bank on the first one, makes some sense to me. I think that there's a way to, in essence, sort of make it work. And if we want to have some kind of benchmarks that need to be met, I really, I don't mind doing that. That seems to be a very complicated way to do it, but at the same time, in order to move this project forward, I really don't mind. On the second one, I have a little bit different, a little bit different take. I mean, I think the 14% is appropriate. I, and I think that in the long run, the 14% really is cheaper to the development community than anything else, because we do need to generate some kinds of, of funds as we go along in this project. And the only way to do that is through tax increment. There's not going to be any sales tax revenues, there's not going to be a whole lot of, of anything else. So, I mean, I, I think that that 14% really is, it's a good figure. I mean, I think that if, if we really wanted to get complicated about all this, we can do what Toby has suggested, and you could itemize the expenses and all the other kinds of things. But I think that, in the long run, that 14% is going to be, no matter what you do, it's going to end up coming back to approximately that amount. It may be 15, 60%, and we got to eat a couple of percentage, but this project is so important, in my opinion, that we eat it. But I don't know how you eat the whole 14%, because there are things that we have to do as an agency, or we have to do as, as, as a city and a community to move things forward. And I would even imagine part of that 14% is going to go back into the project to start with. There'll be some instances later on down the road where something is necessary, and some of that will go back in. So, anyway, those are my thoughts, and hopefully it kicks off the discussion on the council, and, and we can get things moving along.
This is highly unusual, so I, I would just want to ask you not to take a lot of time.
Okay, Tina Thomas, I'm here today on behalf of Smart Growth Investors. And, you know, I always think it's a mistake to negotiate at the podium. I don't think it works well. You know, we can't give you our reasons in five minutes. I think that because Jeff's opinion is that we can't make a change between the first and the second reading, that we would just agree to another first reading, because I think that's the only way we're going to resolve these issues. We, I don't think we're going to do it here tonight, because the way we look at it, when we look at a whole deal, we look at our level of our entitlements and our costs, and we run numbers on it. The numbers that we ran aren't the numbers that we're talking about tonight. So I am suggesting that we just suspend this first reading, do a second first reading at a later point in time, and give us the opportunity to continue working with staff to negotiate this rather than negotiate at the podium.
Let me just get a check-in from the city manager. Are there any consequences for processing Prop 1C or bonds or anything else, or?
No, no, not in the timeframe that we're talking about in, in terms of a short delay. I, I think that we advanced this consideration to this point as an accommodation to the, to the developer and the property owner. So if, if they wish to delay it, we can do that.
Would you, I mean, it's not as if the issue gets resolved because we've delayed it. So do you, do you feel you need more discussion in order to start up the conversation again, or is that unnecessary anymore?
Well, I think, I think any guidance that you wish to provide us will help us, because this will come back to you, and it'll come back to you in some form. And we're, these are topics that we have not had an opportunity to vet with the council at all. So if you have any guidance, we don't need definitive action if they're not, if you're not going to take some action this evening. But if we got some guidance, that would be helpful.
Okay, well, okay. So with that, I would concur with Bill on the benchmarks issue, and I would concur with the earlier conversation about the, I don't know about the 14%. I, I don't, I don't, I can't sit up here and say that that's the right number, but I do think we need to preserve the integrity of what the intent of the redevelopment's baseline core, core functions are. And I don't know what that is, but I, I believe that. And so I think we need to continue that. I'm concerned that if we go down a different path without qualifying it, saying this is an exception rather than the rule, we set a standard for the next project around the corner that's going to expect the same application, and I'm concerned about that. So, and I get that we treat the pioneers a little bit differently, and I'm okay with that. I think that incentivizes it, and it makes it good for everybody. But I'm concerned if we go down that path, like I said, that it's going to set a tone that we don't, we can't, we can't afford, frankly.
I agree with Bill. And I guess Oscar, but, so.
You agree with me and got lost?
No, and I guess Oscar too.
Oh, okay.
No, I was longer earlier, so. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, just like to make a point that when we're talking about the 14%, it's just not the increment that's going to be coming in for this project, because if, if we have increment, that means there's going to be buildings there. It means there's going to be people there, people living there, people working there. It gives us the opportunity to get restaurants here and all the other amenities we want. So there's a lot of after effect for this kind of development to occur. Sure, it's, there's going to be a certain tax increment that's going to come right into the redevelopment agency, but this would be a general fund-producing, revenue-producing project if people move in and can start supporting what we need to do here. So, and that, we're not even talking about that, there's probably no decent way to estimate that. But, you know, if we do get this thing built out, at least according to moderate plans, we're going to have more people there, we're going to have a better ability to have a streetcar going in there. So there's a lot of advantages outside of just the direct tax increment that are coming into here. And I think it's, you know, the, my direction too on the tax increment would be that, you know, we do have to cover our costs. I think that's important. We can't go in the hole on this, this project. But at the same, same time, we have to really look at how we can work with, with the community to make this project happen within the current economic situation.
If I could, I just had a, you just had a question, maybe for the city manager. But I guess, I was a little bit confused. So, so the applicant says that they were surprised by the 14% admin cost. And I, and I'm just, I want to understand what, what would cause a surprise. I mean, I, I thought that we spent quite a bit of time, and I'm, I'm asking this in all sincerity, because I don't know, and what I understood is that he was surprised by the 14% admin cost. Wasn't that, hasn't that been part of the conversation for the whole financing plan that we've spent the last couple of years working on? I mean, I just, it seems surprising to me that that would be a surprise, or that that would have not been discussed.
I, I don't think it was a surprise that there was an administrative charge, because that was been in the MOU, or in the development agreement since at least October. I think what was a surprise perhaps is the actual calculation, which we hadn't done previously. I mean, it was really, I think in December that that was generated.
Versus the, the, maybe the, like, Bill said, the line item, actual cost versus something.
Right. And again, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of time, because of the recent vacation, to identify alternatives and, and individual cost accounting versus a general 14%. So that, that hasn't had much discussion at all. But the concept that there was administrative charge was in the development agreement, back to at least October.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So if we were to continue the first reading, is, is, should we be continuing the certification of the EIR as well, or, or maybe we proceed with adoption of the certification this evening?
You would go ahead and do the addendum. It doesn't really, it doesn't really make a difference one way or the other on that, until you have a project.
But there, but there is no likelihood that anything you're going to do with respect to these items would undo your certification of the environmental documents.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kristof?
Toby, let's go a timeline. I know the 13th is, is a big meeting. It's, there's a lot of items on it. So this can't come back next week.
No, it would not come back next week. It would come back in February.
February, okay.
The first meeting in February also is fairly sizable at this point. The second meeting is not, not as heavy. But if we're down to, if we come, if we can come to a resolution, it may be a fairly quick item. It might be able to come in on, on the...
Because I think everybody, well, I don't, I can't speak for it, but for me, with the exception of those two items, I support the, you know, I, I support the, the development agreement, so.
Okay. All right. So then the motion would be to certify that we've reviewed and considered the, the EIR and addendum, and then to continue the first reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion to that fact? Moved by Mr. Johansson, seconded by Mayor President Viegas. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify that we are continuing to a date certain, February 3rd?
Okay, continuing.
So we don't have to re-notice it.
Okay. So we're continuing February 3rd. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, ring none. Motion carries. All right. Brings us to council calendar. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, we are meeting on January 13th, which is our off-regular meeting, but we will not be meeting on the 20th. And then also on the 13th at 10 o'clock will be the dedication of the Sacramento City College campus at West Sacramento.
It's on the 10th, right?
At, pardon? At 10 o'clock?
It's on the 10th?
The 13th at 10:00 a.m.
Oh, 13th at 10:00 o'clock.
Any, any other questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Nothing this evening.
City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from members of the council? And we have no future ten item requests? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some, oh.
Moved by Mr. Kristof, and seconded by Mayor President Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, ring none. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.